Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting on Monday, March 25th. We'll begin with a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Galloway, can you take the roll, please?
Jeff Dents.
Here.
John Palmer.
Here.
Aaron Moan.
Here.
Jeff Borowski.
Here.
And I'm here.
All right. Item number one on our agenda is public comment.
Mr. Dents, we're gonna be amending the agenda in coming months, but we should be doing the executive session report right when we come out of the executive session. So with your permission, I'll do the executive session report now.
Is that correct, Mrs. Galloway?
Go ahead.
The board held an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss several personnel items. They also received information from the manager and assistant manager on two items that have come before the board. No votes were taken, no deliberations occurred. The board also received information from the Solicitor's Office regarding a settlement of a lawsuit against the township by the name Michael Moore versus Falls Township and two township police officers. This was a settlement by our insurance carrier. All of the money that is being paid is paid by our insurance carrier. The township has not paid out any money in this settlement, and the township does not need to approve this. I point that out because this is similar to something that happened a few months ago, and there was some confusion as to whether or not we needed to vote on it in public. We did not, even though it was alleged that we did, because we are not settling this matter. The insurance company settled it. We also received information about an uninsured motorist claim that had been settled. And finally, we discussed a matter of potential litigation.
Thank you. That takes us to public comment. Are there any names on the list? I see any, no, any hands? No. Item two, Air Liquide Electronics, US LP, preliminary and final land development.
Hello. Mike Coyle, I'm the engineer for the project. So bringing up the plans, these are the latest, final plans dated November 15th of last year. So this is the property on 19 Steel Road West, consisting of two parcels, in the heavy industrial district. Going through the scope of the project. This differs a little bit from the resolution, just to point out that this includes the four one-story buildings, a fourteen thousand square foot admin building, which is...
What exactly are you doing, building an addition here?
Additional buildings, yeah. So an admin building here, fourteen thousand square foot.
And the other one on the right, bottom right?
Bottom right, proposed production building, seventeen thousand square feet there, and then a parking lot expansion up here to include thirty-five spaces. I believe the resolution says forty spaces, but it was revised in the last November drawings to thirty-five. And also a two-story emergency response team, command center, and maintenance shop. That was not on the resolution. It was on the latest plan. And also, there's a couple of modular buildings. I'll go to the next plan for that. And these are on here, a concrete pad for a modular silane production building. And also over here, there's an addition to Building Two, thirty by forty-foot concrete pad for a modular DCS support building.
All right.
So I just wanted to clarify that. So this project is, the reason for this expansion is Air Liquide is involved in the microchip industry, and they're looking to expand because of the past CHIPS Act, and they need to increase their production in that area to increase their gas production, and that is the purpose for the expansion in the proposed manufacturing building. And also, the property is already an industrial district. There are several improvements to the drainage on the site, new inlets and piping, and the expansion of the existing stormwater basin to a larger infiltration basin that'll greatly improve the drainage on the site and from what it is currently. There also, you know, it's an expansion of the existing use of the property. There's no residential areas close by, and it's generally going to be an improvement to the overall site.
All right.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Jones, what are your thoughts on this?
We've reviewed the project multiple times. It's a good development. I believe the applicant is expanding for a technology that might be the first in the country, so it's kind of a righteous cause, and engineering is sound.
And the stormwater is in order, everything's good?
Stormwater is in order. Yes.
All right. You have anything to add, Mr. Clark?
We do not.
Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No. No, sounds good.
Mr. Borowski? Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, a couple of questions up. With all this expansion, are you looking at bringing in more employment to the area?
Yeah, there will be additional employees hired for this expansion, and that's part of the reason why they want to add the admin building, traditional offices and worker space. So there would be, I'm not sure exactly what the increased employment was. Robert would have that answer if he's listening. Yeah, sorry.
Bob Kripich, Director of Operations for the site in Mooresville. It'll be staggered as we expand. Within this building, there'll be phased different product expansions, but I'm gonna say twenty to forty employees in that range.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Any public comment needed? No hands. This is Resolution Number Twelve?
Eleven.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Item three, Stephen and Jean Speranza. Three forty-seven and three fifty-five Austin Drive.
There we go. Good evening, Heath Dumack, Dumack Engineering. Here this evening representing the Speranzas. They are sitting behind me. What we are looking to do is do a lot line change. What they have right now on Austin Drive, the property line is here, and the understanding between two brothers is this homeowner mows up to the creek, this homeowner mows up to the creek. They simply want to shift the lot line to run it down the center of the creek.
That's it?
That's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from board members? This couldn't be any more straightforward.
No questions.
No, no questions.
No questions. All right. This is Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Twelve. I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment needed? I'm sorry. No, we did eleven, Mrs. Twelve. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna skip item four. No, I'm not kidding. Item four and go to Corko Chemical Corp., minor subdivision, two nine nine Cedar Lane.
Hi, good evening, Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin, here on behalf of Corko Chemical. This is a minor subdivision of the Corko Chemical property. I don't know if you can see it, the plan that Heath is, yeah, go ahead, highlighting. But the current site, as it's configured, is approximately five point eight one acres, and it is very oddly shaped. So I'm gonna reference, what we have is the proposed Lot One, which is where Heath's highlighting right now. That is the portion of the Corko site, which is currently improved with a number of structures. And then you have what we've been referring to as this stem that exists behind the Jonathan Way property. So you see, there's a little rectangle, my client does not own or operate. Then you have a stem, and then you have a more standard rectangle to the left of it, which is unimproved. This site was subject to a proposed subdivision that I don't think went anywhere a few years ago, because it was very oddly configured and oddly planned, and there wasn't an adequate solution with respect to what to do with the stem. When we initially submitted our application, we were running into similar issues, trying to figure out the appropriate area to create the subdivision. And we came up with what we think was a pretty satisfactory conclusion, and that is to convey that little piece, which is just under six thousand square feet, to KPK Development, which abuts it. So the end result is going to be actually three conforming-looking lots. You'd have the unimproved portion, which Heath is highlighting, where there's no intended development right now, but it would be a normal rectangular lot. You'd have the six thousand square feet being conveyed to KPK as part of the subdivision, a lot line change, and then you'd have the balance of the Corko site, which is gonna remain, and you would permanently remove and delete the stem. In the event that Jim Shepherd, who's with me, seeks to develop the unimproved site, he obviously would have to come through the township and seek the requisite approvals at that time. Otherwise, all of the waivers that we're seeking have to do with the fact that we're seeking waivers from improvements like curbing and sidewalk installation, because there's no development that's proposed. Otherwise, it's just a straightforward minor subdivision. Happy to answer any questions the board would have.
Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
None, all seems to do, thank you.
Mr. Borowski?
No.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No question.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add?
Just one comment. I think a gentleman named John Coopman will be satisfied if this gets approved tonight.
I don't know how this was designed that way in the first place, but I'll be happy to update him in his retirement.
Mr. Clark?
No, everything seems in order.
All right, this is Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Thirteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, NP Falls Township Industrial LLC, Lot Twenty, amended preliminary and final land development.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis again, on behalf of North Point Development. I have Tim Casey with me to my left from Gilmore and Associates. I have Jeremy Michael, who I believe is on Zoom or participating remotely, that was the intent. This is, as Mr. Dents referred to it, Building Twenty, that's what we refer to it as colloquially. I don't wanna go through all of the property characteristics again unless the board would like to, other than to state that this subject property was before the board for final approval approximately five months ago. At that time, we received preliminary final development approval for a two hundred and sixty-seven thousand square foot structure. Since the date of that approval, North Point, as they want to do, has been engaged with potential tenant to come in and occupy the site pursuant to a long-term lease agreement, and as part of that, it necessitated what really is the split of the building from two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet as one structure to two separate structures, one of which is one hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet, and one of which is one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. So in the aggregate, just under the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand square foot number that was originally approved. One of the buildings would be for warehousing, and the other one would be for a manufacturing operation. The waivers that were granted and were sought as part of the original application are still the same, that's unchanged. The only thing I think besides, obviously, the building split, which I should note, the intention for what I'm labeling as Building Two, the manufacturing operation would be to be phased, is a small stormwater design alteration, which again, Mr. Casey can detail if the board would like additional information about that. But the utilities, waivers, the balance of everything else remains unchanged. So we are back before you, seeking hopefully amended final approval, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Jones, any thoughts on this project or on the plan?
No, we have no comments. We reviewed it twice and have worked through any issues technically with the engineer, so we're comfortable with it.
All right. Board members, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Borowski?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin? No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mr. Clark, do you have anything to add?
No, everything seems in order.
All right, is there any public comment needed? I see no hands. Is there a motion? This is Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a great night. Thanks.
Was Jeremy ever on Zoom? He never made it?
I don't know.
No, I finally got out of the waiting room.
I hear him. Somewhere out there.
I'll see you guys in person next time.
Thank you. Item number six, consideration of termination of employee zero five zero two one six, and authorization of Township Manager to take all necessary action. Mr. Clark?
As the board is aware, this is a personnel matter. Since it is a personnel matter, the board has been briefed by our office and by Labor Council prior to tonight's hearing. The board can ask for a motion, and if there is a motion and a second, you should take public comment, but the board nor anyone from the township will have any response to any potential public comment, again, because this is a personnel and a disciplinary matter.
Okay, so I'll take public comment. Is there any public comment?
Maybe ask for a motion first and...
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Public comment?
Tony Batiste from Gloucester Road. Is there a labor management agreement that the township has with its employees that specifies the discipline and removal process? I wondered what it entails, and I realize you just said they can't answer, but I think it should be a matter of record that somebody's asking. Is the Human Resource Department consulted before notice of termination is issued? Are any lawyers consulted before issuing termination notices or similar practices? And if so, which lawyer is or are consulted? I'm concerned that the discipline process is not being followed. Someone doesn't know the process. The human resource and/or legal advice being given is not sound, appropriate, and/or it's designed to incur further actions at the expense either of the township or of its insurance company, because it seems like there have been an abnormal amount of discipline removals lately, some or most of which have resulted in lawsuits. While these may be covered now by insurance, it raises the possibility of our insurance increasing and/or, it might be increased greatly, and/or if the trend continues, possibly being declined for insurance coverage. And of course, I'm also wondering why now we're seeing this is part of the meeting, but I'm guessing it has to do with the Sunshine laws being better known. If there's no answers, thank you very much.
All right, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. opposed? None? Thank you. Item seven, consideration of proposal from IEI Group for additional services for municipal building renovation. Mr. Tekeeta.
The board is being asked to consider approving an invoice for additional services that were requested as a result of unforeseen conditions with the construction of the building. These included, but were not limited to, existing column locations not in the expected locations, existing unreepored exterior walls in various locations throughout the building, other existing structural issues with the interior and exterior walls, which would include lack of bearing support of beams and linals, and existing footing and foundation configurations differently than expected. Total cost of the services for consultation meetings and revision of plans, as well as coordination with the other disciplines, is seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tekeeta. So basically, this is during the construction, they found things that were different than what they expected, so it's a change order.
Yes.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Borowski?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, do we have a budget for this?
Yes. Yeah, we have a contingency line item, and this is part of that.
I have none. Seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Jeff Borowski?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Aaron Moan?
Yes.
Jeff Dents?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item eight, consideration of traffic signal control proposal from Armor and Sons Electric. Mr. Tekeeta or Lawson?
Good evening. As you guys well know, we use Armor Electric for our traffic signals when we have emergencies. Whatever we can't do in-house, we ask Armor to do. With our last audit, the auditor thought that we should have the board approve their timing material, even though they're co-stars. This will be a co-stars that they do. So they just wanted you guys to approve it. They thought that was the best way.
Who picked these holidays that they are called for double timing?
I'm assuming that they go through the co-star's contract. I could ask about that. If they're federal holidays through the co-star's contract.
Okay. Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
We've been using them as long as I've been here, or longer probably. Mr. Borowski?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
I have none. Mr. Tekeeta, any to add? Mr. Clark, any public comment needed? And they are a Falls Township business as well. What's the, so how are we just approving this proposal, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
As presented, all right. Is there a motion to approve the proposal from Armor and Sons Electric as presented?
So.
Would just be subject to our review. This agreement is still under review with our office. So we're just finalizing our review with this.
Okay, so we're just finalizing it?
Yes, my office is finalizing the review, so you can just approve it subject to final approval of the Solicitor's Office.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine, consideration of vehicle purchase for the Public Roast Department. Mr. Lawson, you're still here.
So this vehicle will be the bucket truck that we wanted to purchase last year. Due to, I guess, the way that the truck market went and stuff like that, prices went up. We had to ask for additional funds to fund it, and now we're ready to go out and hopefully purchase the truck. We tried to purchase it a few times with on-site trucks that were already built, but none of the vendors were co-stars or state contract. So we have two different people that we're using for the purchase. One would be Fred Beans for the cabin chassis, and then the second one would be Mobile Lifts for the body and the lift of it.
So there are two separate ones. One's fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for the purchase. The uplifting, upfitting is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty.
It's a little under a hundred and fifty-two thousand, because there was one thing, the front rack was deleted for the front back window. We're gonna utilize one that we have.
All right, and this is budgeted for?
Yes.
Any questions from board members?
No questions.
Mr. Borowski?
Not so much a question, but it's crazy, the estimated days, three to four hundred days for the delivery.
Yeah.
It's wild.
And with that number, you know, it seems like a lot, but last year, they were talking two and a half years out on a build. So I'm assuming now that we're getting back to our regular lives after all these years of COVID, things are starting to catch back up with one another, hopefully. So...
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, can you talk about the truck that you're replacing? Like, you have two of them now, the one's out of service and...
One's out of service, and the other one is the bucket truck that we'll be replacing, that we constantly have. The rear seal bearing keeps going in it. We've had issues with the transmission, and we've just been back and back to Fred Beans to get it fixed. And every time we get it fixed, and then it leaks again, we take it back, and it's just, it's an ongoing situation.
What year is that truck, do you know?
I wanna say it's two thousand and four, but I'm not positive.
Thank you.
I think it's a little later than that. I'm sorry, I didn't have that.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the vehicle and the upfitting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Yes. Jeff Borowski?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Aaron Moan?
Yes.
Jeff Dents?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Item ten, consideration of stone and asphalt bids for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
This is the consortium bid through the county that we do every year. It's just our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five bid.
So this is standard, the consortium, we go in with all the other townships, and we all pay the same price and get a better price. Any questions from board members?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions? All right. Any public comment needed? No hands. Is there a motion?
Mr. Dents, this is subject to the Solicitor's review.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item eleven, consideration of authorization for advertisement for bids for tree trimming service. We're just advertising?
Yes, we're going out to bid for a tree company again. We've been doing it every year. It would be up to the board if you would like to do a one-year with a two-year option. I think that would be better instead of going out every year.
We've done that in the past, right?
What did we just get done doing? Two years?
No, just one year.
It's all us?
Yep, it's one year each year. But I think if we go with the one-year, two-year option, if the company is not good, we can always not use them the following year and go back out. It's an option for us.
I like that option.
Said a lot.
Yeah.
The contractor that we had this past year, that seems to be winning the bid, is
He's been, yeah.
responsible?
Yes. Yep, very responsible.
All right, so we're just advertising. Is there a motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawson. Mr. Andrews, you're up. Item twelve, consideration of resolution for the DCNR grant for the playground for the Falls Township Community Park.
Yes, thank you. We've been through this before. We're actually in a process of applying for a DCNR grant. The application is due on April third. Part of that checklist or requirement from the township is to pass a resolution to commit fifty percent of the total cost, if awarded the grant, that we could, you know, cover the fifty percent cost of it. And that's basically what that resolution in front of you is stating. It's part of our grant application we have to submit.
So for those that don't know, this is for the Phase Two of the park. It's a very popular playground, and it would be a handicapped accessible, just like the Phase One. And a grant would pay for half of it, so that's what we're doing.
That's the plan.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No questions.
None?
No.
No.
No questions.
Public comment needed? See no hands. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-15?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Item 13, consideration of a stipulation to settle tax assessment appeal on Canal Road, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Dentz, the board has in front of it this evening a stipulation to settle a tax assessment appeal that was brought by the Pensbury School District in which the township and the county joined. The property is located at Two Canal Road in Falls Township. The owner of the property is NMHB LLC and Ubak Limited. For the tax year beginning January 1st, 2024, the property taxes shall be increased from $172,970 to $440,000. This will increase the assessment by $267,030. And if we can have a motion to approve this settlement.
All right, all right, any questions for, Mr. Clark, from board members, it's pretty straightforward. Any public comment needed? All right, is there a motion to settle the stipulation?
So moved.
I'll second, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you have another one?
I do indeed. This is also a stipulation to settle the, what was brought by the Pensbury School District and then joined by the township and the county.
One second, Mr. Clark. So it came to our attention that there's a car fire in a parking lot, is that correct? There's not a lot of cars, right? Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
It's not a white Subaru, is it? Oh God.
Get a ride, Mike?
Never done that. We can't mistake the lunacy, it's not even Falls Township, we're starting crazy.
Again, this is a stipulation to settle that was brought by the Pensbury School District and joined by the township and the county. The property is located at 99 New Bald Road in Falls Township. The owner of the property is NMHB LLC and Ubak Limited. Beginning on January 1st, 2024, the taxes on the property shall be increased from $185,400 to $540,000, which would result in an increase of $354,580. And if we can have a motion to approve this settlement.
Any questions for board, from board members?
None, right?
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That takes us to item 15, consideration of escrow release request. This is for Trench Tech on Bristol Pike in the amount of $72,659.06. Any questions or comments?
I don't know if this project has been going on.
A long time.
I feel like it's been a long time.
Yeah, there were multiple, multiple phases of the project, but this most recent one hasn't been going on all that long, about six months.
Near completion or not?
Yes, very near completion.
Any other comments or questions for board members?
No.
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion to release escrow amount $72,659.06 for Trench Tech?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Jeff Baraski?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
Jeffrey Dentz?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right, so we have a few appointments, item 16 through 24, we have one asking to be reappointed, William Crawford for the Historic Architectural Review Board. Want to make a motion to reappoint Bill Crawford?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We have one for Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee for Robert Leary, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Planning Commissioner, we have Mary Leschuck, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Oh, it does?
Yeah, that's 2024-16.
All right, that's 2024-16, all in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment for any of these appointments? We have one for the Police Pension Committee for Suzanne Hannigan, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, anybody have any other appointments? That takes us to the minutes from February 26th and March 12th. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen.
No, no corrections.
None, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented for February 26th?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
How about March 12th, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, because I wasn't there.
I wasn't here.
All right. That takes us to the Engineers Report, Mr. Jones, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, last month we received one new land development and seven new earth disturbance permit applications. As usual, the highlight, red highlighted text identifies where we're providing updates. Items 1 through 23 on the land development section, those just indicate various stages of construction progress. Moving down, item number 25, that's Trench Tech, you released the escrow, it is coming to completion. You've heard number 26 and number 28 earlier tonight, as well as number 31. Number 32, the Dangit Track will be at the board next month for approval of multiple lease areas. It's an allocation of space land development. Item number 33, Mill Creek Road is now under construction. Number 35, you heard earlier tonight. Number 36 will be at the Planning Commission tomorrow for a recommendation of approval. And number 37 will be at the board, this board next month. The last one, Levittown Lanes, it was a simple zoning review that we did so the applicant can proceed confidently to the zoning hearing board for zoning relief. For the earth disturbances, the only highlight in the middle column, that project is substantially complete. In the, in the last column, the first one is under construction now, as well as number 48. Number 49 was approved, as well as 53, 54, we issued a review letter, and that's the Penwood Crossing Force Main Project. That's been before the township staff multiple times. And then approved number 55, 56, 57, and 58, and finally number 59 is, we issued a review letter for that one as well. I don't have any highlights notable for the township projects, but I would like to say that we would like to present our ideas for the Martins Creek Stream Bank restoration at the next workshop meeting that the board has, as well as our ideas and bid numbers for the Fallsington retaining wall. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just Lake Carolina, it's still...
Lake Carolina is in FEMA's hands, they, the applicant's engineer, the county's engineer acquiesced and submitted to FEMA, and I saw some email traffic between FEMA and the applicant's engineer. I haven't heard whether or not FEMA's approved their calculations. And I suspect that may be a bit of a time delay, because we had an issue with the way they calculated, they presented the calculations. I will keep you updated.
Thank you so much.
And do everything I can to facilitate that project.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Baraski?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No question.
Any public comment needed on the, all right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Takes us to the bill list, we have a big one, we have a bill list, the amount of $3,431,356.57. The level of 1.1 million is payroll. There's a big bill, $900,000 for Rycon Construction. Atlas Mechanical, almost $300,000. The electrical is over $220,000. Audio/video equipment down payment is $115,000, grace construction over $100,000. Lawn equipment purchase is over $85,000, so it's a big bill list. Any questions or comments from board members? None?
No.
Any public comment needed? See no hands, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Jeff Baraski?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
Jeff Dentz?
Yes.
I vote yes.
All right, item 28, our Labor Attorneys Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell, and Hippel, bill list in the amount of $50,050, $50,051.06. Any questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion to pay that bill?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Jeff Baraski?
No.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
Jeff Dentz?
No.
I vote yes.
That takes us to the Jones Engineering Associates bill list, the amount of $356,648.95. Any questions or comments on that bill? Any public comment? Is there a motion to pay that bill?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Jeff Baraski?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
Jeff Dentz?
Abstained.
I vote yes.
All right. That takes us to manager comment, you want me to read these for you, Mr. Tekeeta? Just a couple of things on here. Spring Yard Waste Cleanup Day will be Saturday, April 13th. The Free Bulk Disposable Day, disposal day at the landfill will be Saturday, April 20th. There's a shredder event, where's that going to be located at? At Pensbury High School, Saturday, April 27th, and a prescription drug takeback at the same time. Is that right? And this will all be on the website and social media. All right, that takes us to board comment, Mr. Galloway.
Well, just do want to comment, we had a tragedy in the township. I'm sure everybody in the room would agree our hearts go out to the, to the families of the victims. Whatever else we thought of doing that day, it's not as important as what those people went through. My heart goes out to them, thank you.
Mr. Baraski? And I echo what Mr. Galloway said, very well said, thank you, Mr. Galloway. Ms. Mullin?
That was well said by both of you. I just want to add our thanks to Chief Whitney and all of the responding police officers and all of the neighboring township and municipal support that we got from other departments. It was handled as best as could be under such tragic circumstances, so thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment, I just want to echo our thanks.
All right, that'll take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.